Okay. I'd like to call to order the Douglasoni Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, October 10th, at 7:08 PM. First agenda item is North Brown LLC considering North Village.
Who do I tell? You.
Just you.
Okay. I'm gonna recuse myself on this topic.
Okay. So just for the record, Mrs. Holland has recused herself from this case. Also, Mr. Bombara, Mr. Tosino, and Mr. Holland all have excused absences tonight. Okay. Bill, do you want to join us, too?
Sure.
Plenty of seats tonight.
Too many.
So, just looking for an update from last month.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Ed Tykle for North Brown LLC. Since last month, two weeks ago, I had submitted a amendment to the amended MOU dealing with that paragraph of the amended MOU that deals with the water tower and the booster pump issue. And we need to amend that because, as we discussed at the last meeting, we've agreed to install a cistern on the site. And so, since that provision was in the MOU with the Board of Selectmen, that was the appropriate document to amend. So I had prepared the amendment and sent it off and was expecting to present it to the Board of Selectmen last week, but I guess the Chairman felt that it would be appropriate to have the ZBA review it first. So I think that's why, that's the main issue that we need to address here tonight. The cistern design was received last Friday from StanTech. We haven't had any response from, I don't think, from other, from the Fire Chief or any other town official. Bill may?
No. When we received it, I circulated it to everybody, and I think you probably have a copy of that plan in your packet tonight. It should be 11 by 17 size. So I would agree with that. In order to keep this moving along, we should probably conceptually agree with the location and if the Fire Chief, I haven't heard from the Fire Chief directly, but I would say if you're okay with the location pending Fire Chief approval, that we authorize them to move forward with finalizing the design, assuming you have no objection with what they showed so far.
No, as long as the Fire Chief's...
If the Fire Chief is okay with it, I think his opinion is important.
What other parties, Bill, would we be looking to?
You would be approving the concept plan, the concept location for the cistern. This is representative of what we discussed at our initial meeting, which you have before you. So it's consistent with what we laid out as parameters for StanTech's design. We formally have not gotten feedback from the Fire Chief before this meeting saying he agrees with that design. So I would suggest, I'm okay with the layout and the design that they show. The applicant is also, from what I hear, okay with that. I would encourage you to authorize the final design based on the preliminary pending Fire Chief approval.
Does that need a vote?
Well, wouldn't hurt to take one.
But do we have a farm to take a vote?
Yeah, we do, because we have five members and two alternates. So we have three out of five full members, yeah. So we do have the majority.
So you need a motion?
Yep.
Make a motion to accept the proposed location of the cistern as presented?
Pending Fire Chief approval.
Pending Fire Chief approval.
the cistern are not a problem, but that involves the Fire Chief, I guess, so that's covered?
Well, the issue that you're describing is currently the layout shows a parking area perpendicular to the main road so that a fire vehicle could pull up next to the tank and draw water from the tank to put out a fire. The initial discussion, I know the applicant was interested in having parking within the roadway for the fire apparatus. That was really the only discrepancy, and I'm not sure if you've changed your opinion or okay with this layout at this point.
That opinion came from the Chief.
The Fire Chief. As I remember, our meeting that...
Yeah, that wasn't my opinion. I was following the Chief, but whatever he decides on.
Yeah, their preference, I think, was that there was the stand, the dry hydrant, I guess they call it, would be next to the road so they could just drive the truck up next to it and hook into it.
Okay, so this was a parking area that's shown.
Well, that wasn't the Chief's idea. Let's be clear about this. That's what you presented, and the Chief did not object to that.
No, 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 no.
That was what the Chief, my initial design had a turnaround in it. The Chief said, "No, I want to pull up parallel to," and it really wasn't the Chief, it was the Deputy Chief.
It was the Deputy.
Yeah. He said, "I want to pull up parallel to the, just like I would a hydrant." And then it was...
Well, that would be the quickest.
Yeah. Then it was discussed about blocking the roadway, and he said, "When there's a fire, I'm blocking both lanes, nobody's getting by." Yeah. So it had nothing to do with it. But that came from the Deputy Chief. But whatever is they want, I will certainly build.
So, yeah. I mean, if the Chief wants, if the Chief is happy with that...
If he prefers that, I'm happy.
In any event, that, in my opinion, that would be a minor variation in the design, so it certainly would be within the Chief's, you know, ability to modify that towards the final design. What we're looking for is the setbacks to the buildings, the offset to the road, those sorts of things. And I think the location is laid out, is fine at that location. I just want to wrap it up so we can continue moving forward.
Mike's motion would be subject to Fire Chief's approval.
Yeah, so he wants to adjust it.
So if he wants to move this, you're...
Whatever he wants.
The only other thought is, if we do do something like this, obviously you've got to prevent people from parking here, whether they're guests or whatever. So it just could cause another problem. I'll second your motion.
Oh, thank you.
And looking around, "I think it's me."
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mrs. Holmes, to, subject to Fire Chief's approval, to agree to move forward with the cistern design. Okay. Call of favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes three in favors, no, nobody against.
The only other issue would be the, if you want to discuss the amendment to the amended MOU this evening, or if it's something that should be negotiated between, I mean, we had submitted an initial amendment, and they had added quite a few things, and much of it we don't have a problem with. What we do have a problem with is not being able to get additional building permits because we've started Phase Two. We have, well, there are two issues. We have, there's one building left in Phase One, and it's in the middle of the phase, so it's really creating a problem, of course, in terms of working around it and marketing and whatever. So we'd like to be able to get the building permit for that building, first of all. And then, as we've started Phase Two, to be able to pull building permits in Phase Two so that we can get started on building. Otherwise, we're not going to have any inventory in the spring to sell. So, you know, we need to, we need to keep moving. So that's it. I mean, we're fine with just getting occupancies, you know, for the rest of Phase One. If we're going to go until November, I think, before the next meeting, we do need a couple more to get us through to the next meeting, occupancies. And the, and a building permit for that last building in Phase One. And then the issue of building permits for Phase Two, we can discuss tonight, or we can, you know, negotiate it out, you know, between, between the parties. It's up to whatever the Board desires.
Board members have any comments?
So there's one foundation left?
There's one foundation left.
Left to go into Phase One.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, you're talking about Phase Two. What's in the agreement before you start Phase Two as far as building permits?
In the, in the comp permit?
In the original.
It's in the original comp permit. There's some provision for, I think it's section seven, on page six of the decision. I don't know if you have it.
So I'll have to get a copy of it.
And it says that we can start the phase, you know, 18 months following the commencement of the prior phase or sale of 50% of the units in the prior phase, which we've, you know, both of those things have been met. So we've started...
So you sold 50% of probably how many were in Phase One?
Twenty-six. We've closed on 10, and we have purchase and sale agreements for seven, so.
Yeah, how are we with, no, sorry. How are we with the affordable units?
Affordables, we, we've sold one.
They need to be complete by, four of them need to be complete by, for every 16 units?
For every 16, yeah, yeah.
Those are moving forward, yeah, they're being completed.
We've got interested parties, it's, we've got to work through the qualifying, that's the, that's the trick.
But those, those are being completed, how far away are those from COs? Couple months? Sixty days? Sixty days, and we've already completed, completed 12 or 11?
Completed what?
What?
How many occupancies? Do we have 10?
You have 10.
10, and one of which isn't affordable.
So you got, you got three and three.
So we have three more. Three more, yeah.
Three and three.
Three and three, yeah.
How are you going to catch up?
Well, I'm just, so the other, the three of the, of the standard units, for lack of a better term, what are you expecting the COs on those?
This month.
This month. And then it's going to be, you just said a couple months before you get the COs on the other ones?
Well, there's one, there's probably a month away.
There's one that's further along, yeah. Yeah, so there's, out of the four, one is sold, one's almost ready for occupancy, and two are being completed now. And then all the other affordables in the phase are currently under construction.
Four out of 16.
This, this one building that we were asking for a permit for has one affordable unit in it.
Yeah. I think we got a little ahead of ourselves because, going back to last, the last meeting, two meetings ago, you got three occupancies, last meeting you got two occupancies, and it was all hinged around this cistern thing. So obviously, we have the design or concept design. What's the, the plan for ordering it and getting into that part of it?
They need the Chief's input.
We need, yeah, I mean, I think if we get the Chief, in the MO, the amendment says, you know, when all the parties agree in writing to it, then we'll proceed to order it. So we're in agreement, if the Chief, if we have the Chief's agreement, then we'll order it, and...
So it looks like that we could get it by the end of the year?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes.
Is there a...
And I don't think, you know, and I don't think that the design will, the design of the tank will change that much.
No.
You know, even if location changes.
No, but that, that was the area of...
Yeah.
Yeah, if the Chief says he's okay, we're going to order it immediately.
And we would like to, yeah, so we can get it in.
Into another direction and forget all about that. That was something that we're concerned about two meetings now, so.
In the original, was the booster pump supposed to be installed before, is that a building in Phase Two?
No, no, it said six occupancies for the booster pump. That was the issue on the, on the booster pump. And again, the, you know, when we got the building and, and...
Which would have been Phase One.
Right, in Phase One. And then the town says, "No, you can't with the booster pump," and so we've started this whole process. And obviously, this has taken a lot longer than anybody anticipated. But then again, it took five years to do the MOU, so, such as it is.
I'm not sure that was due to the towns. Any issue with the town, Ed?
Actually, Ed...
Was it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It wasn't that we were, that we weren't...
I was under the understanding that you weren't ready to build.
No, that was after the permit was issued. Took five years from the time we applied to the time we got the permit. We were looking to get the permit as soon as we could.
Yeah.
But by the time we got the permit, it was 2010 and the market had gone.
But as these things goes, that was a bit, that was a negotiation, you know, they had single-family homes way back then.
Yeah. Yeah, so everything changed.
Right.
Ask Larry a question. Where do we stand with those two foundations that were put in recently?
Give a building permit vote.
Yeah, so, yeah, we have, again, there's this one building that we need a permit for.
I'm talking about two other foundations that were put in.
I think...
I'm not talking about that last one.
Oh.
I'm talking about two that were just recently put in.
Yeah, no, we have...
Yeah. Is that the same building?
No, no, there's only one building in the phase that we don't have a permit for.
That's left. So the two before, I was just questioning.
We have permits.
There was an issue that came up within the last week about two foundations that were put in prior to the issuance of a building permit.
We have permits.
We can do now.
Yeah.
You've been... We would like to continue getting building permits. The occupancies...
Well, you have to.
Yeah, exactly. And the occupancy is being held up to control what we're doing, making sure the cistern goes in is totally acceptable. But we have to keep moving forward.
So let me understand this. The last building in the phase has been issued a building permit?
No.
No, no. The other two foundations that were put in prior to the issuance of the building, that's what I was finding out with the status was on those two foundations.
Anything, I'll just send MOU, Bill, that...
Well, in your packet, you'll have Ed's draft that he submitted to the Board of Selectmen. That's at the back end, it's a clean copy.
Yep.
And then I circulated that to the Fire Chief, the Water and Sewer, yes, that's what Ed submitted. And that's my markup with, which I obtained comments from, you know, Town Council, the Fire Chief, and the Water and Sewer Superintendent. So I did share that. I just drafted it today, reviewed it with Town Council, he said it looked okay, and then I forwarded to the applicant and the ZBA.
Yep.
And that's where it stands. And I know Ed said he has an issue with, I think the one thing he has an issue with is...
Is getting, yeah.
I'll let him speak.
Yeah, is getting building permits in, in Phase Two, again, to keep going. I mean, we need to, we've started constructing the road in Phase Two, and we, you know, when it gets to a point where we can get building permits, we want to be able to get building permits. We're hoping that, you know, if we can get the cistern ordered this week or, you know, the next few days, then, you know, maybe in, the weather cooperates, maybe we can get it in before the first of the year, we find if it gets delayed, you know, it's a problem. And this, this says that we can't, you know, until it's all in and inspected and approved, that we can't get any additional building permits. And we're not looking for occupancy permits in Phase Two, but we would like to have building permits so we can get foundations in before the ground freezes, and so we have something to build. Otherwise, we're not going to have any product come spring.
The Fire Chief, when he was in, his biggest concern is under construction, actually, as he says, when most fires happen, it's usually during the construction point. So I would want his feedback back on that, as far as the foundation...
But he didn't have a problem with the issuance of occupancy permits, as I recall, what he, what he said at the meeting. You, you had, I think you had asked him, or somebody had asked him, if he was okay with the issuance of occupancy permits, and he said, "Yes, because there's fire hydrants there and they have water on the truck."
He did say that. Yeah, because I asked him at, at what point would he be uncomfortable having it, and that's when he said that, in his opinion, that most fires happen under construction, not after somebody's living in there. And it's a much rarer occurrence for it to happen after that.
Yeah.
But as far as, yeah, as far as, as far as moving forward, my personal feeling on it is, I have no issue with them getting a building permit for that last remaining foundation in there. However, whatever the agreement is originally for the Phase Two, whether it relates to the road, sidewalks, whatever it is that needs to be done, we should be starting to follow that path.
We're fine with the original permit in terms of that. This, this, the amendment that was marked up changes that a little bit. Mine doesn't, but, but theirs does.
Right.
So...
But if we follow that, you're going to have less of, less of a problem with the Board or anybody else if you're following how it's been spelled out originally, unless it's, wait a minute, let me finish. Unless it's previously agreed upon, because what you've been doing is coming in and saying, "Well, we have a closing in, in five days, we have another closing a week after that." We shouldn't be put in that position to make a decision whether or not to keep somebody out of their house because you have a closing with them. You're scheduling a closing, not knowing if you're going to accomplish getting the CO. So you're using that as leverage to come in and ask us to grant you relief to, to get your COs. I don't want to do that. I'd rather just help you streamline it, move forward, get it done, and move on to your next project. That's fine. So, it's not going to be difficult, but I don't want to go back and forth with you saying, we had a decision, and I, that, it's just, it's pretty simple. You guys all agreed upon this. I wasn't involved in it the first time, but you all agreed upon how the rules were played, so let's just play by them and get it done.
Agreed. You agree?
That's my own, my personal...
Was the original based upon completion of Phase One before building permits were issued?
It didn't tie to Phase One, it tied it to the building permits and occupancy permits, and it said that the water booster pump station shall be installed, I believe...
Yes.
By the, by six building permits and six occupancy permits. So that would be within...
So we're way beyond that.
While they gave a provision in there, because of technical things like this, for the ZBA to step in and issue additional building and occupancy permits. So there is a provision in the original agreement for if something came awry, which it did, for you to step in and do just what we're doing here. We can come before you and ask for additional.
How far are you away from paving Phase Two?
We might get binder down if, into December, if we can still do it. So it's, it's close to getting binder down, but I don't think so, it'll most likely be April.
But you want to start getting building permits in that phase?
Yes.
Because I distinctly remember talking to the Fire Chief, and he said he didn't want, not want his equipment going down an unpaved road.
In the original Phase One, we did receive building permits before it was paved, because it's a condo project and it's really considered a driveway.
I have to talk to the Chief about that, because he was very adamant about sending that kind of expensive equipment down an unpaved road.
Was it in something in here about the road being paved, and if it wasn't, then it's supposed to be a turnaround at the end of each phase for the fire apparatus? There is a turnaround, yeah. Not paved.
No, but I'm just saying that.
It would be the condition of the road, and the permits we would ask for in the, it would be in the beginning of the phase, it would be right at the edge of pavement, it would only be 50 feet past, at 100 feet past. We just need enough permits to be able to take six months to build home. How many houses are in the first phase?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four units?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
I edited one while you weren't looking. I'm glad you're laughing. You're laughing. You're laughing? Good.
Yeah, there's roughly...
Twenty, twenty-six units.
Yeah.
And you have 10 already done.
Right.
That leaves 16, and then over the next few months, you're going to have four done. That's not inventory, though. Keep going.
Well, they're all sold. Everything that's in the first phase is sold. I only have one unit sold right now.
That's good.
So it's to have stuff ready for April, you know, if people will be coming and they'll be looking then. If you don't start now, and we wait until then, it's six months before you can get something completed.
I know I talked to the Chief about that, and maybe he's changed his mind, I don't know, but that was, he was very adamant about, about not driving that equipment.
What would the original agreement say? Does it say that?
We don't have an agreement right now.
There isn't.
There's nothing in it.
There's nothing, yeah. Yeah, there really isn't anything that addresses that by the way at all. Again...
Occupancies, it says that the paving has to be completed...
It says the infrastructure has to, you know, be completed by...
Before the first occupancy.
Before the occupancy.
So before the occupancy, the paving has to be done, what about sidewalks, any of that stuff?
That's all supposed to be done. Sidewalks, driveways, roadway.
Water, sewer.
Water, sewer, drainage.
If it's in the agreement, I'll see what the issue would be. It would, I think it all hinges back to the Fire Chief as to what he's going to be comfortable with, because he didn't make the statement whether or not, he was uncomfortable with the, with the under construction portion of it without adequate supply, so it would probably be to your benefit to get that cistern in sooner than later.
Sure.
Put it out there, because then that, that eliminates that whole concern. So then your occupancies would be under the problem if you don't have your sidewalk, your paving, and all this other stuff, and that's in the agreement, then...
It's like air.
Yeah. I guess you'll be waiting until you get it in.
So, logistically, I guess, the question is, we've got this amendment to the amended MOU that has to be approved by the Board of Selectmen, I think, first. And we're, you know, we need to negotiate some, some of the language in it, I think, that everybody is comfortable with. And the question is, should we work with Bill, Jay in order to do that? Is it something that the Board wants to get involved in prior to the point where it's presented to them or not? I just, you know, I...
We didn't get this until quite late.
Yeah, I didn't get it until today either.
Well, I only got it for a week, I think.
Two weeks. So...
So do half us comment?
Yeah, no, I understand. You know, I'm just trying to work out a logistic, because I was confused, and still I'm confused as to how I, how I do this. Do I go to the Board of Selectmen, because the MOU is signed with the Board of Selectmen, and they've got to sign it? Do I go to them first? Do I go to you first? Do I negotiate it with Jay and Bill? Do I negotiate it with the Board? You know, just looking for some direction.
I want to say, my edits, and it's not just mine, it's Jay's and it's the Chief's and the Water and Sewer, are really intended to be reflective of, you know, the town's position, staff's position. You certainly have the ability to modify that, take into account the applicant's request, and change that.
So my question to you, Al, is which, evidently you're not, you're kind of unhappy with some of the changes that have occurred. Why don't you let us know where they are?
Fine. You want to go through it?
This is lost recently, yeah.
That's Bill's and this is Ed's.
But this is, this has been modified by, this is Ed's modified by Bill after the fact. Okay, which whereas should we start at?
I think you can skip the whereas.
Okay. Skip the whereas's.
That's okay. We agree with that.
The now therefore.
Go right to the now therefore, yeah.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, that and now therefore.
Yep. Now it's from pitch two.
Go to B. The, the concern we have with B is the last sentence, which basically is open-ended in terms of additional requirements in terms of the cistern. And, I mean, it's kind of open-ended, and we're concerned that there's going to be costs imposed and requirements imposed that we don't know about. So I guess we'd like it further defined or eliminated. That's that section.
The additional requirements would only probably be based on any unforeseen...
Yeah.
Things during the construction of it?
That's what it's intended for. So we got a proposal from the designer. It was for certain things. In the event that something beyond that scope occurs, that would cover that.
If it said that, we'd be fine with it.
Jay drafted that, I mean, that's fine. I mean, that's the intent of it.
Just need to modify it, just put a notice.
Well, the intent is not to make them do anything that's not already agreed on unless something comes up that's...
No, that is not the intent. It's if something unforeseen happens that we need to deal with.
In terms of the site.
Right.
In terms of, you know, installation.
Yeah, if you need to add more underneath or whatever. Eastbound.
Well, that was easy.
Keep rolling.
C, C, there's a blank date. Where are we?
C, next page.
There's a blank date. We'd propose May 1, 2019, just in case we get stuck with a very bad winter and delays in delivery of the cistern. And again, and C probably, again, is the biggest issue, is that during design and installation, we can do work, but we can't get building permits. And we'd like to be able to get building permits, at least for a couple of buildings in Phase Two, so that we will have inventory come spring. So that's the issue on that.
Where is that?
Right in the middle of the paragraph.
Oh, okay, failure to comply with?
The issuance, excluding the issuance of billing permits.
Yeah, I had, in my draft, I had the ability to get billing permits in Phase Two, and that was eliminated, so.
I'd like to consider putting a number on that rather than just open-ended building permits.
Mm-hmm.
That would make sense, maybe?
Yep. Was there a condition of Phase Two billing permits couldn't be issued until Phase One had as-built plans and so forth?
Correct.
Are they done?
Well, actually, I think that's...
No, that's, it's not in the original.
We're adding that.
Oh, I thought it was in the original.
No, we're adding it.
And that's coming from the fire chief and the water and sewer superintendent.
So put a number to it?
It just makes sense. It's pretty open-ended.
Eight, four, four buildings. I mean, it'll be the first four, and they're actually closest to the cistern.
Again, I would still refer to the fire chief, because we're getting into construction and we're past the, what he's comfortable with for fire suppression. So not to throw it all on him, but it's, it's here, his area.
His inputs and so on.
So we're saying four?
Four building permits.
Four buildings, eight units. Jay, at the last meeting, did say, somebody just brought up as-bills, and he brought up the fact that, about the as-bills, because we increased the size of the buildings to make sure that we're meeting setbacks.
Mm-hmm.
Has that been addressed at all?
Yes.
Yeah, we did get a plan. I didn't get it in your packet, but I have some comments that I want to talk to Eric about, but, you know, I'd like to see it on the site plan, not just kind of floating, which is what he gave me.
Yeah.
So I can't really see it.
Yeah, we're heading in that direction, I would say.
Okay. Let's see. E, the last sentence of E, about imposing additional conditions and requirements, again, it's open-ended. I mean, we, again, I think the process is to get the amendment approved by the Board of Selectmen. The amendment is intended to deal with that one parrot, with that one section of the MOU, which deals with, again, the original one deals with water tower, booster pump, and we just want to replace it with cistern. So, you know, we don't want to open up, we don't want to open up the whole permit again and start talking about conditions of the permit. We're happy with the existing permit that's been issued. So that's, that's the concern with that section.
So that was put in by Jay?
Yeah, I certainly didn't write that.
And certainly, it seems to be minimal in that it's discussing, under its authority, under Chapter 40B.
Well...
In other words, it's not really broad.
Well, no, it's pretty, well, what is your authority under 40B?
Got me.
Yeah. I don't think, I don't think the board has the authority to alter the terms of the comp permit after it's been issued. We have the right to come in and request substantial, a change in the permit, which we've done, you know, we did it with the size of the buildings. So, again, I'd like it clarified. I mean, it's something I can discuss with Jay. We can probably come up with language that will satisfy both of us. All right, we'll go on to F. F, we did talk about the hoses as, and agreed to do it at the, when we had that meeting. The fire chief said the cost would be $54,000, which we agreed to. So we would like to specify that that's the amount. We don't want to have a blank checkbook for the...
He actually, I got a copy of that email, the quote, it's $54,000.
$54,000, yeah.
Should be able to hold his vendor to what he quoted.
Right, right. So, and we'd also, because the...
Is it 54 and change, Dan?
I think it was 54 and change.
So say 55.
Not to exceed 55?
Not to exceed 55, no. We would like the ability to pay that as we sell units. The original MOU had a provision for if they put in the water tower, we would give the town $81,000, I think, or $82,000. And that would be in $2,000 increments as we, as we sold units. And we'd like a similar provision for this. And we think it's reasonable in that we will, that would be 26 units. And given the 16 additional occupancy units we need in, in Phase One, and 10 in Phase Two, the chief had said that his hose, his four-inch hose that he has now, is good for 800 feet. And that would cover everything in Phase One and also cover a good part of Phase Two, certainly. So if we could do it in $2,000 increments, that would, again, help us in terms of our cash flow, because, you know, the affordable units, we're selling them at a loss.
Mm-hmm. So the cistern was installed, and the equipment that he's asking for, you're agreeing to give him, isn't supplied. Can he still operate his equipment?
Yes.
With the four, with the four-inch?
Yeah.
Yeah, he said his four-inch, when the chief was there, he said his four-inch was good for 800 feet, after that the friction of the water and so on and so forth.
Right.
We want to just get some input from the chief on that, on the...
I think so.
Of course, the other thing is we're limiting it to 55,000, but if it takes 26 sales, hypothetically a year from now, that 55 may not be enough.
Well, that's, that's the problem, and the financials of the town.
I mean, if you do it, whatever, a couple thousand dollars of closing, and you get 26 closings, if it takes a year to make 26 closings, those prices may not be current, or may not be good at the time.
We could add that on the sale of the 26 unit if there is an increase.
Right.
We could, we could adjust at that time and make a lump sum payment.
Yeah.
Yeah, if there's, so if there's a 10% increase, a 50% increase, we make a lump sum payment at the end.
But that material will come in now, well...
So we got to go fast.
That's a good point.
Okay, all right. Well, again, we can discuss with the chief and if he's agreeable, you'd be, does that make sense?
Is that what the board feels? Is the chief okay with that?
Yeah, I think a meeting with the chief and Bill and the administrator might be able to iron those things out.
Yeah.
So is all this chief's good with the window?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And the administrator.
And then, really, the last one is three, which alters the provisions of the, of the comp permit.
Of the what?
The comprehensive permit. And doesn't relate, again, it doesn't, it's a paragraph that really doesn't relate to the cistern and alters the provisions of the comp permit. So, you know, we can't agree to that. And again, it basically means that we have to complete a unit, provide as-built plans before we can...
Complete phase.
Yeah, before we can start the next phase. And so, well, even though we've, and we haven't done it between Phase One and Phase Two, because the permit doesn't provide for it, but we don't want to get into the position at the end of Phase Two that we've got to suspend a building, and so we're in a six-month or seven-month period when we don't have any product, and so...
Question. Is the setbacks considered to the foundation?
The setbacks, the only setbacks associated with the project are between the units.
Right, is it, but is it to the foundation?
To the foundation, yeah.
Yes.
Then if you only got one foundation left to do, then you do them at any point?
The important aspect of this, from my perspective, I agree from the ZBA's perspective, that distance, setback distance to the units, but that wasn't the intent of that, that condition. It was more on the infrastructure, to make sure the infrastructure in a phase is completed accurately into the grades and elevations that it's supposed to be before we proceed to the next phase. That's really what it's intended for.
This language, there wasn't anything near this in the original comprehensive permit, and this is really outside of the scope of what we are talking about, and it's really trying to go back and change the original permit. And it would, essentially, I would have to complete a phase 100%, have as-bills done before I could start the next phase. So it wouldn't be a two, three-month delay, it would be a six, eight-year delay. You have to have, be completed 100% in a phase before you can start the next one.
How far away from 100% completion of Phase One are you? Next spring, is that it?
Yeah, next, next spring. But it's talking about the next phase after that, Dan. I wouldn't be able to start Phase Two at all. I wouldn't be able to start the infrastructure until Phase One was 100% complete.
Right.
And quantified in an as-built.
And we have the same problem with Phase Three, and so, you know, we're doing a phase and then stopping, and we're doing a...
The infrastructure's being inspected as it's being put in.
It wasn't, it wasn't in the original.
But just for clarity, just so the board knows, you can inspect, you know, pipe installation every day of the week till the cows come home. They're doing the proper method, that's great, but that doesn't tell us that elevations are where they need to be and that it will function as designed. And that's really what the purpose of the as-bills is, and to have a record drawing.
But that's what, that's what we...
Having the as-bill done? It's in the process, a lot of that's being done now. We've already shot a lot of that. So shooting the manholes, the pipe, a lot of that's already been done in Phase One.
Yeah, so what do you, do you think you would have, that you would be...
Well, it's...
I'm just curious.
100% complete would be in the springtime.
I mean, the, in terms of Phase One, the road and the detention basin, those are all constructed last year, and we provided as-built to build last year on it. So, and that was consistent with what the, with what the existing permit says. You know, it says as-built plans of each phase is grading, and that was provided. So, again, I, you know, it's dealt with, this whole issue is dealt with in the original comp permit. And, and again, it has nothing to do with the cistern, so that's the objection we have to it.
But Bill's point is valid. It may be doing a great job installing it, but if the grades aren't correct, it may not function as designed. The only way for them to know that is to have an as-bill.
Well, we can provide as-bills as we're going along.
We can provide as-bills of the infrastructure.
Yeah, as it's being installed, that's not an issue. If the issue is 100%.
But the issue is, yeah, having the last foundation constructed and all the grading done around the foundation.
Question for these guys. You just asked for four foundations in the, in the Phase Two?
Yes.
You gonna ask for any more between now and the spring, or not?
The cistern will be in.
The cistern, hopefully, will be in.
Yeah.
I don't think we'll need them before the cistern. And again, you know, if it's...
No, but you asked for four foundations, and you anticipate being done with your as-bills by spring, and if you're not, you gotta be putting in any more foundations between now until spring.
Yes, yes, I will be putting, no, I will most likely be putting more in before spring. As soon as I get, we get the cistern in, I want to start dropping foundations. By doing as-bills as we go along on infrastructure, it's not a problem.
Yeah, we have no problem with that. We've done that.
And we have, mostly. Drainage, water, sewer, those things. And this is coming from the fire chief and the...
So your issue is, and that's built on the whole thing with the foundation.
Exactly.
So if you're comfortable with the infrastructure...
That's my main concern. It regrades the...
Yeah, I think it's just a lack of communication between the two.
I think you both...
Up the boulevard.
Oh, just a rule.
No, 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 no. We provided an as-bill for the road through Phase One last September.
I'll have to check.
I have to give you a copy of it.
Great.
But we have no problem with that, given updates and as-bills.
Bill's concerned is the infrastructure.
Yeah, right.
I think they're fine.
So we would like to strike three and maybe change that to as-built on infrastructure as it's being built.
Second, we reword that somehow to make everybody happy. So we'll leave three in and just change it, tweak it. Oh, right, oh, no, we've got number four. What's number four? I'm a little bad there.
Trying to revise that.
But we will.
Something to the effect of...
Well, I've kind of taken it all in on, there's a number of items, and I understand what the intent is, so I can work with them on that.
But you'll still be getting an ad hoc on all things, probably by spring anyways?
Most likely, yeah.
I mean, I think we should know that Phase One has been substantially built to specs before you get fire with Phase Two.
Yeah, we already have most of that work done. We have had partial as-bills done, and we have supplied those. So there's not a problem with that.
So, C, should we limit the billing permits in Phase Two to four buildings?
Well, right now, he's asking for four building date units until he gets the cistern, and then hopefully he can go in a merry way. And, but then, from what I'm gathering, is it going to be able to satisfy Bill's concerns with the law? Bill's...
Okay, but this language is excluding the issue controlling the product. So we're going to change that to say, four building for eight units?
Eight units, four buildings.
For private, yes.
As we discussed, yeah.
Yeah. Well, and actually, there's the one additional one in Phase One that they would like to draw.
Right, exactly.
Let's not skip over that, he'll be back in next month asking again.
And I want to reiterate, you know, monthly progress schedules and, and what's forthcoming is to continue so that, like, for the roadway paving, for example, I need to plan whether, you know, we're going to have a asphalt testing company come out, and just want to make sure that communication is ongoing.
It's gonna be easier for everybody if we start working together instead of.
Yep.
Buttonhead. Can we go back to C again? Phase three of three. You want to strike that whole thing out?
Which one?
C. Phase three of three. Oh, that's unbilled, yeah.
No, that's.
C?
At the top.
No, he just wanted a date.
At the top, that we're just putting the date in, and that's where we added, no, 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 no.
Oh, E, I'm sorry, my glasses. E.
It's like a C to me, too.
E.
No, it's the second paragraph, the second sentence. I, no, we, we're going to strike it, we're going to further refine it to, well, yeah, I mean, I, we would. That's fine, the first sentence is fine, may impose additional conditions and requirements consistent with its authorities, kind of open-ended.
So it's all J.
Yeah, I know that, but as, as we've just, we've gone through this for the last three or four months, it's not part of the original agreement, but we can put additional conditions on there because of different circumstances, so I wouldn't want to see that eliminated. We could take out the consistent with the 40B thing, I guess, but if you're.
No, no, that, that, that's the only protection that we have, I mean, you know, the board could, the board could put any kind of requirements on.
Then you leave the sentence in there.
So, so the only reason that we'd be using that authority would be if they, if we run into problems, and, you know? As has been going on, we have been altering things, so just.
Well, no, no, I mean, it, what it does is give you the, give you the right to amend the comp permit, we talked about that, under the, under the statute. You don't trust us.
It's not that we don't trust you, the boards change, people change, things change.
Under the statute, yeah, not, not looking.
Not looking to amend it, but.
The board doesn't have the right to unilaterally change the terms of the comp permit as it's been issued.
How is that different than what we've been doing?
Well, we come in and ask for something, like, we want to change from a booster to a cistern.
We have the right to ask for a change.
And then you have the right at that point to start saying, oh, well, to get the cistern, you have to have.
You can say no, you can say no, but, but you can't say, oh, well, you need to, you know.
This gives you the right to impose additional conditions across, blank, across the whole project.
A lot of this started when we exceeded the six units without the booster pump.
Right.
That, that's when a lot of this stuff started.
I understand, I would suggest that that wasn't our fault, but, you know, it's.
Whoever's fault it was, but.
It was in the permit, and we asked for a change in the permit.
Conditions and requirements in there, that wasn't part of the original agreement.
Right, which we requested, but we have the right to request it, the board doesn't have the right unilaterally to impose additional conditions on the comp permit.
So why don't we have Jay looking over this?
Again, we'll, we'll discuss, we'll discuss it with Jen.
Yeah. But anytime we come in, Mike, and ask for something, you have the right to impose conditions on that when we ask for a change.
Let's see what town.
But I, I think Ed's original question was whether or not we felt comfortable having Bill and Jay, you know, working with him to, to compile this thing. I personally think that's a better idea than us trying to hash this up.
Work out the details and then show you the final.
I think it'd be easier.
Well, I mean, they have our thoughts and feelings on it now, so.
Otherwise, Ed's going to bring me to law school and teach me how to read all this.
I'm glad, I'm glad I can charge you law school tuition. Okay, that's fine. So I think, is that?
So I, I think, so do we need to vote on that? As far as addition, letting them have the last building permit in phase one and the additional.
Five, five building permits, the last one in phase one and the first four.
No, occupancy.
All right, one question before you continue with that. Is a building, two separate buildings, two occupancies, or is that one occupancy in a duplex?
That's two.
That's two, so you're asking for 10, not five. There's five foundations, it's 10 units. So just be clear on that, because you're, you're saying four, four and one, it's actually 10. It's four, it's five buildings, it's five buildings, but it's 10 occupancies.
10 units would probably satisfy. With the language saying 10 units would cover.
Yep. But, yeah, I, I just like, maybe the unit could be considered a foundation.
So additional 10.
We always like the loopholes.
Building permits.
No.
Two, two in phase.
Five buildings, 10 units.
Yeah, one in phase one, and four in phase two.
Right, four in phase two, and there's one final one in phase one.
Right, okay.
For a total of five buildings, 10 units.
Okay, good, correct. And then occupancies, I mean, well, if, if we get the, if we get the design approved and ordered, can we just go ahead and get occupancies for the rest of phase one? I mean, that's what this says.
Again, that, that refers back to the chief, huh?
Yeah, that's what we discussed.
This is all going back to the safety concerns of.
I suppress.
Of everything, so.
Well, maybe Ed, Bill and Jay can, can come to an agreement on this, and then maybe we can at least, can be emailed to everybody for review.
Well, I guess, in terms of the occupancies, though, can we at least have an agreement?
In terms of the occupancies, you need to have four.
We need to have some more before we meet again.
Affordable completed by the time you have 16 total.
Right.
Occupancies.
Yes, so.
Okay, I'm just, because we're eliminating that, that affordable out of the conversation. Being, I mean, and we talked about it, you said you just leave the inventory or whatever, but they have to be there.
They will.
You said they were all sold except for one, but the affordables aren't sold, are they?
No, the affordables aren't sold.
So there's more than one.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I was talking market rate.
I'm talking total.
Yeah.
So, like, what we discussed, that we want to go by the original.
I agree on the basis.
Yes.
Before moving on to any phase two, want to make sure that every, all the Ts are crossed and Is, Is are dotted before we move on to phase two.
As far as the original agreement, I don't know how that plays in with the original agreement.
Well, we could probably have a catch-all at the end of this that says nothing in this amended MOU shall supersede or alter the provisions of the comp permit.
So right now, do we know what you're building in phase two? Because I see here, looks like the building footprints have changed from 1,960 square feet to 2,448 square feet.
Those are the ones that we presented last, last meeting.
It's from the original, yeah, to the larger design.
And.
They haven't changed again.
And now, now we're building one-car garages?
No, two.
Are there any one-car garages?
Yeah, there is, yeah, there's some one-car garages.
How come we reverted back?
To the one-car garage?
Yeah.
I captured some of the space inside the second car garage?
Yeah.
Yeah, to do a bedroom on the first floor. But the footprint of the building is the same.
So what kind of, look who you're planning for the, for the condo, for the condo association up there? I mean, some people were strict, and they want all vehicles parked in the garages, whatever, whatever. Now you've got a one, couple of one-car garages, so that you can't even contemplate that, or can you?
We are not restricting people to parking inside their garage.
They can park on the driveway.
Yeah.
So, those are plans you're building now, or what you're going to build in phase two?
Correct, yeah.
Can we ask Larry and Bill if they have any concerns as far as the, these occupancies that they're asking about?
Larry, do you have any input?
Come on up.
Sure, Larry, jump on that. We saved Jesse.
Me? Jesse. As a next builder, I always give people enough rope to hang themselves. So issuing, issuing permits should be a right, almost, issuing the occupancies, that's where rubber meets roads, or, so. I think the real critical path there is the affordable units have to be sold or marketed totally until, before the occupancies for feet to begin.
And Mike?
I don't know if they necessarily need to be sold.
It's going to be completed.
As long as they're completed with an occupancy, I don't know.
Well, the affordables are tied to the sale of units in the decision, that's why I need to know when they sell.
Yeah.
Tied, tied to the sale of them, but if they don't, if they. Yeah, but, what's that?
Four affordables for every 16 units have to be sold.
That's what it says in there?
That's the ratio, it's not the occupancies.
No, but is that what it says in there?
Yeah, yeah, awful.
You agree to that?
You can, you can not even amend it, you can say, as long as they're completed, we can move forward.
Who can, who can do that?
The zoning board can.
Oh, okay, I thought, well, we, we haven't contemplated that.
Our vested interest is obviously the affordable units, and we want to make sure that's being kept up and prioritized, frankly, with the sale of the market rates, that's our only interest.
Yeah, this is supposed to help the town.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm just.
In some way, I haven't figured it out.
I'm trying to understand it and help them at the same time to understand, Larry said about the sale of the unit, so I didn't realize that it was a sale, I thought it had to be completed with an occupancy, but not necessarily so that the building designated as being affordable unit. I didn't realize it had to be sold as well, so how did they get past 16?
They have to sell four affordable, then they can continue, and then it's the next 16.
Basically, it's 25%, four of every 16.
So, so, so behoove the people that are building to market.
I'm just trying to, I get all that, but I'm trying to understand it, so Neil said three months to get the affordables done, and I think you said a month to get the other, the market, the standard units done. But you can't get any more occupancies until he sells those units that are going to be done in two months.
You can alleviate us from that condition, as long as the units are completed, we've done that in other towns, because you run into this issue all the time in a 40B, it's sometimes hard to get the affordables moved. And I've been in situations where towns have let us lease or rent the affordables.
How are these advertised?
They're advertised.
I'm asking this for a simple reason, is I haven't seen them advertised anywhere.
They're advertised in MLS, just like a market rate unit is.
And they were advertised when we had the lottery.
When you had the lottery?
When we had the lottery.
When was that?
A year ago?
Yeah, last fall.
Last spring.
So do we do it again, is there another time that it gets done, or they only get done once, and?
Well, we did the, the ads in all of the papers, and.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, thinking that people that are looking for affordable units, or, or that could qualify, I shouldn't say even looking for them, that people that could qualify for an affordable unit have it in the back of their mind that they can't afford a house, so they don't even look. So, how, how would you go on an MLS, looking for the unit, or contact a realtor and say, hey, I'm looking for an affordable unit?
It's also advertised with mass housing on their website.
But no local papers or that uprooted.
We are, we are.
That I throw away every month.
Yeah, no, we are doing that as well, we're, Worcester, Milford, Webster, we thought would be the markets in terms of.
So you've been doing that, or you're going to?
We're in the process of doing it.
I, I, I would think that, me personally, I would want to see some of that effort put forth before I said, all right, it's not working, so, yeah, you can, you can.
We've had, we've had about 30, 20 to 30 interested parties in the.
But you only sold one.
Only sold one, I know, well, the problem is.
Smart guy about it, I'm just saying that.
The problem is qualifying, right?
So you gotta.
You know, because there are income limits and asset limits, and at the same time.
Eligibility because you've got to be a first-time owner and all that, yep.
So it's a, you know, it's a, it's a narrow window in terms of fitting in.
But if it's, if it's a deciding factor in you, in you doing the project effectively, I think some aggression needs to be done in trying to sell these floors, I think.
I would think they're going to.
I just haven't personally seen them advertised anywhere.
We're doing the best we can.
I mean, I'm sure the state must have some resource to help 40B to cement buildings.
Have you seen it advertised anywhere?
No, I think I remember something about the, the very beginning, but I don't know.
It was on the town's website for a while, I don't think it is anymore.
I, I get the, the limited effort to it, but in order to get people that could qualify for it, you really kind of got to stick it in their face, though, so they understand that it's out there, otherwise they just don't think there's any opportunity.
How you market is your business, so.
Yep.
No, but it, it's, it's somewhat of our business, because it hinges on, on, he's asking for relief to get occupancies.
Absolutely.
And, and the rules that they agreed to years ago.
It was still 16, there's a map right this minute, 16.
And, and I haven't personally seen any advertised, so that's why.
We have a substantial investment in the affordables, once they're finished, the cost, pretty close to the same as building a market rate, there's not much difference. So to have four units sitting there unsold, we are trying hard to move those units.
Okay, but I'm just saying, I haven't seen them advertised anywhere locally, so.
Understood, I hear you a lot.
And I'm sure if I, if I went and talked to everybody I walked in, down the street, they wouldn't know where they were either.
Point made.
So as of right now, there's a maximum of 16 occupancy permits?
Yep.
Well, I want to be clear about that, so.
Twelve occupancy, yeah, twelve, but four.
So, so let's, let's start from the beginning, you had the initial six for the water booster pump, it came in for an additional five, that gets us through 11.
Yeah.
Right?
Occupancies.
And then what are we approving tonight?
No, we had, we, we had 10, and last meeting you approved an additional two.
Yes.
Yep.
Because you asked for five two meetings ago.
It gets us.
Gave you three because your closings brought you comfortably through that point, then you had two more coming up, one October 15th.
Right.
If I remember correctly.
All right, and one's, one's the end of October.
That was the Sunday, no, that's the 14th.
One's, one's the end of October.
Okay, I have an idea.
So.
Could you provide us with a spreadsheet, please, of your properties? I'd like that for the zoning board.
Sure.
Absolutely, I want to know with the unit numbers and, and what's sold, what's not, what's affordable, I guess, Excel spreadsheet would work wonderfully with that information. And then we'll, we won't be going round and round, well, we, we did how many, we did, okay? This is silly, to keep doing this, shorten it up.
We'll approve the total of 12.
So again, wait a minute, so now we have, we have 10 occupancies now?
Should be 13, because one of the ones that sold is an affordable, so we'd like to get.
Was six, but you had gotten seven.
Well, let's.
Then we get three, and you already had seven, that's 10.
Let's, we have 10, yes, we have 10 right now, okay, but you bought, at the last meeting, you authorized an additional two.
Right, that's around, we're at 12.
We're at twelve.
So that's a twelve, right? So, but of that twelve, one of them isn't affordable.
Okay.
Eleven. So we would at least like to get twelve market rate. Before the next meeting.
So that would be the rest of phase one.
How much? I didn't hear you. What'd you say?
We'd like to have twelve total.
Occupancy?
And you have twelve now?
He has eleven market rate. He has one affordable. That brings him to twelve. What you would like to be is that twelve market rate and one affordable.
Actually, one more.
If I understand you correctly.
One more than the other two. Yes. Essentially, well, we have ten that are sold, okay? Ten that are sold.
So we went...
Nine.
Yeah.
Ten that are sold, nine of them are market rate. So we have three more market rate occupancies that we would like to have between now and your November meeting, I guess is the bottom line.
Three market rate and three affordables. That's what you have left.
Well, yes. I mean, if, yes, if we get an affordable buyer and, yes, right.
Those will be ready for sixty days. The dynamics of that, it's not twenty-five percent at all.
I think sooner.
No, it's ten.
It's fifty. Three market rate and three affordable. That's what he has left.
Oh, yeah?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, I got it.
So...
I'm with you.
He should have, you know, a four to one.
Uh huh. Ratio.
Ratio.
It's got one to one ratio.
No, but you're discounting the remaining units.
Right, yeah, you're discounting the remaining.
Yeah. We're talking in chunks of sixteen units, Larry.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah. So right now, he's at ten. Right now, he's at ten percent because he's got one out of...
Correct.
Right.
So he's under the requirement.
Okay.
Anyways.
I was just talking about between now and November, your November meeting.
You have more scheduled closings?
Yeah, we got three.
This is the problem that I brought up about twenty minutes ago. Is by giving you building permits, and you're coming in and saying, now I got closings. I need them done. And I think the last, when you asked for the five before, that was going to bring you up into November.
No, that was going to bring us to, when we originally asked for the five, it was going to bring us to October, okay? Last month, you gave us two more to make the five, okay? And so now we're into November, and we would like at least one more, which will get us to the twelve.
They're just looking for one more market rate.
And, right, and obviously, if we can sell the affordables, assuming that the town would have no issue in terms of issuing occupancies for affordable.
I'm sure it would be the case.
Well, I don't want to assume anything.
Look, has any requests for one more occupancy permit or market rate unit?
I'm thinking. I was looking to see if we had, because this has the September meeting minutes.
Uh huh. It does.
I was looking to see if I had August. I don't have August, yes.
It was actually July that I asked for the five.
Okay.
I have that one.
See if we can act on that request because we have people who are waiting an hour and a half.
Time flies.
It doesn't say any other time.
So the request is for one more market rate occupancy.
I'll move that we allow the North Brown to have one more occupancy permit.
Of a market rate unit?
Of a market rate unit.
Okay.
For a total of twelve.
Period. I didn't say that. You did.
Well, you authorized two, just so it's clear.
I'm not, no, it's not clear to me, and I told you why. I would like an Excel spreadsheet so I can tell. This conversation is getting us all into trouble. I just made a motion to allow one more additional building permit or occupancy permit for a market unit.
Okay.
Can you get that spreadsheet to us by the next meeting? As far in advance of the meeting as you can. Appreciate it.
Second.
Okay, so a motion to allow one more market rate unit occupancy permit made by Mrs. Holmes, seconded by Mr. Patrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And one more unit.
So now, what are we staying with? So he's all set with his other five things? Are you going to work on that?
Yeah, we're going to work on the decision with the applicant and town council and the fire chief.
For the remaining, for the items as discussed. In the floor and the surface.
Correct. One last thing before they leave. I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, that, so we can avoid a lot of this type of discussion, that anything that's being requested for action at the meeting that the applicant submitted in writing to the board in advance of the meeting, so we have time to review it in advance.
If you could do it.
Thank you.
At least a week in advance, that would be good. Just so we can review it, maybe generate our questions before the meeting and everybody here.
We get bombarded with this much stuff, the next time I'm going to ask to continue.
All right. Fair enough.
Thank you, guys. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the record, Mrs. Holmes now rejoined the board. All right, the next agenda item is case number two zero one eight dash twelve. It's the continued public hearing for Robert and Diane Miller, one fifteen Shore Road. The applicant and representative?
Good evening. My name is Ralph Mancarius with Alphomega Engineering, and I'm here with Bob Miller and Diane Miller, the owners of the property. I think last time, the board asked to continue the public hearing after they walked the site. I'll carry it.
Right.
I'm just wondering if the board had a chance to do that?
I know I did. I drove by the site.
And actually, before the meeting, we received this document here. I don't know who wrote this one. It's an owner or a professional?
It's going to be ignored because it was not signed.
Okay, okay, great. All right. That's easier. Just to give the board, let the board know that this, the plan, the site plan was submitted to the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission and Mass D E B, the Mass Fishery and Wildlife, and they were both, all of them approved the plans. And it was a public hearing for the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission, and they all approved it, and it's recorded in the Registry of Deeds, and I have the book and page if you're interested in it. Other than that, actually, we submitted the new house plan last time, and we submitted a new plot there last time, and everything is in order. This is the same document that was submitted actually last meeting. It's exactly the same thing from last meeting. Nothing changed.
Now, a scrap pick up. Remember?
That porch area was being pulled back.
Right. We brought that back so that it's flush with the front of the house that was requested by this gentleman, Michael. And that was not a problem. We did that. I will say this. I do appreciate you allowing the handicap rip. And the reason for that is Diane's grandmother was...
You explained it to us last month.
Diane's grandmother was...
You explained it to us last month.
Yep.
Thank you. One second. Anybody that wants to speak will be recognized. We're just trying to get some of these questions answered, the board's questions answered, then I'll open it up to the floor.
Yep. And at the last meeting, basically, Madeline, my neighbor, was stating that water was running from my property onto her property. And in fact, it's actually from the road, not from my property. If you saw the wall, the wall was designed so that water would not go on her property. We could have very easily poured the wall. It would have been kind of ugly having a poured wall there. So we ended up putting, retaining wall costs more money, but it looks much, much nicer now than a poured wall.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, just look at them. Look at the larger ones. Did you get to see these?
Well, I have really colorful ones.
When I did the site visit there, it appeared that a water runoff that was, I'm talking about, came from the road, not from your property.
Right.
Which is my opinion. Not as an engineer, but it appeared that was where it was coming from, was the roadway.
Pretty rough.
The original driveway was tied, and there was actually no runoff on this driveway. Then the septic went in here.
Yep.
And the wall went, and there's been no runoff. Water doesn't run uphill and over a wall.
Yeah.
And that's the reason that you put the wall up.
On the design of the wall, what we did was we put a rubber roofing material here for two purposes. One, to prevent weeds from growing up and making an ugly wall. And the other is it's concave so that the water, if there were any, would run down and stay on my property.
It's like a drainage swale that's between the property line and the wall, so it keeps the drainage going through the back.
On our property. The swale's on our property. This kind of leaves these stuff in there, but it's a rubber swale. If there's any water that goes on that side, it will go down on the property. There hasn't been any.
Oh.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I was getting vertigo looking at the other one.
And what we've asked for is basically fifteen-foot offset from each side. And if you look at these, you'll see that the majority of the neighbors do not even have fifteen-foot offsets from each side. So, you know, I don't think what we're asking for is unreasonable.
Even the existing house is only ten feet away from your property line. The existing house itself is only ten feet, so we're going to be...
But you actually increased it on one side.
Right. Now, I did have a discussion with Larry yesterday regarding some of his concerns regarding the construction. He had asked about parking. We have basically six spaces of parking on the lot. And I've also purchased lot one twenty-eight on Shore Road on the opposite side, which provides another ten additional parking spaces for construction workers. And we can also utilize that area for material laydown so that, you know, we're not blocking the road at one fifteen.
Okay. Do you have any concerns, Larry, about the application of parking as one?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's a poorly maintained dirt road, potholes. Two vehicles had to get by, and it's a lot of construction vehicles on one side.
We also have property on Thirty Tuono Road that we would park. We have parked our construction vehicles on our other property.
I've just heard complaints that vehicles were parked on the road before.
Makes it impassable sometimes, yeah.
So during construction, are any vehicles will be parked off-road or on one of your other sites?
Properties to show. And one of...
Which lot is that here that you own across from the street? Is it here?
It's further down.
Oh, okay, so it's not directly across.
No, it's not directly across.
Is it on this?
It is this spot right here.
Okay.
That's lot number one twenty-eight. One other concern that Larry brought up in the meeting yesterday was the ability to get the equipment down alongside the foundation. My excavator is a twenty-ton excavator. It's only eight and a half feet wide, so there's no problem getting down with the fifteen-foot offset.
Do you need to do anything to support the ground? I mean, I have no idea what the ground is like down there, but it's...
No.
My guess is it's not wonderful.
No, there's a lot of rocks.
Yeah?
Okay. But the reason the septic is left the way it is is so that we don't have, the walls collapsing down.
Yep.
That's the reason why the septic isn't brought all the way up to the height. It will end up being...
But there's plenty of parking on this side and plenty of parking on that side. We could park in across the street. We could park in down...
Can I see a picture?
I did that lawn. Isn't that nice?
These ladies are good up to your lines. It is nice. Looks like it's a sunny day, too.
Ask the engineer question.
Sure.
Over here, on your plan, it shows your property line back here, but then it shows edge of travel way out here, so...
Yes.
From the edge of the dirt road to the, edge of the road to the house is going to be about thirty feet or so?
It's actually more than that from the edge of the travel way.
Yes.
That would be about maybe forty feet. Yeah, yeah, it's maybe like this.
Yeah, basically, you see the utility pool right underneath where it says edge of travel way.
Oh, yeah.
Edge of travel way.
Right, because of the driveways there. And this driveway there. So your new driveway is only going to be twenty-one feet long?
Yes. Yet. We don't want people driving and parking on top of septic tank.
Wow.
Good plan. Good plan. Well, they'd have to weave around those white pipes sticking up anyways.
Those, basically, two of the white pipes are for a volleyball net. The others are inspection ports, which would be covered over. And the other two large pipes are for checking for groundwater, because I don't want to dig, you know, if there's groundwater there. And that's why we're trying to dig at the end of the year.
Anybody have any other questions of the applicant before I open it up to... Have your concerns been addressed, Larry? Hey, does anybody like to sweep on this issue? Ma'am, I just need you to state your name and address.
Well, I have information that I want to go over with you and questions about and concerns that I have about, basically, you know, one plan saying one thing, one plan saying another, things being approved for three-bedroom. He's trying to build a four-bedroom. Different, I have different information.
Why don't we start with your name and address?
Oh, keeping Shore Road Douglas.
All right, thank you. All right, your floor is yours.
Um, can I?
Oh, please. Sure. Say whatever you like.
Yeah, but I wanted to show you stuff in school.
You sit right there.
He's only going to do one at a time, ma'am.
I just want to say I signed the cover email of this letter.
You know the people that you said you wrote down. I know what you said. Two people talking, I have no idea what was...
Sorry, sorry.
You have the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, so I have a couple of questions that I'm not too sure of. Okay, so I have a couple of questions that I'm not too sure about, um.
What we're gonna do is if you just address the questions to me and I'll seek any answer for you.
At the septic plan, it says for, design for a three bedroom. Okay, and his design plan is for a four.
Okay, one second. You're the engineer?
Yes.
Explain that.
If you mind, one minute. Existing four bedroom house, this was just a table, four, four, four hundred and forty gallons per day at a hundred and ten gallons per day. That's a four bedroom house, that was just a table number. It says up here four bedroom house. So you just, she got only one.
Yeah, but it says design flow.
No, no, it's, it's a design flow, you say hundred and ten, four forty divided by hundred will give you four.
Design flow is a hundred and ten gallons per bedroom.
Another question that I had was, um.
Excuse me, that's approved by the board health?
Yes.
Yeah.
And actually, yes.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Is there an ASBelt for this?
Still working on it.
Okay, and when would that be available?
When the finished final grading is done, we will submit an ASBelt.
Um, when would that approximately be?
We don't know yet.
Yeah, you just have to.
So if they don't know when this is gonna be, then.
Well, just.
As far as the house, the elevation and all of that, we don't know.
Like, you cannot get a, uh, do an ASBelt to get a certificate of compliance until you have splooms spread over it and they certainly, they cannot do that till they put the foundation in and so forth. So they couldn't get it if they wanted to at this point.
Okay.
Just for clarity, it's been inspected up to this point?
All inspections been done.
Yes, inspected and located.
Okay, so originally when the house was built, okay, it was a two bedroom. And then the next owners made it into a three, okay? And, um, the Millers came down to the town hall and they said they have a four bedroom. And so what happened is they were notified on three, twenty-nine, two-eleven. No response and then the, cause the town wanted to come in and see and verify that it's a four bedroom.
Okay.
Because it's always been on record as a three.
Mm-hmm.
And then they notified them again on five-twelve.
Who was they?
Um, the town.
The town, meaning assessors?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they didn't respond again.
Okay.
So some reason, they don't know, they have some notations, they're gonna look it up for me. Um, they have no idea how it could turn into a four.
Second, sir, can you explain that?
I can easily explain that.
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, basically, it was three bedrooms with a bunk room, okay? And what I asked the assessors to do was come down, okay, and view the property, okay? And I would like it to reflect a four bedroom because that's what the septic was being designed for. They changed it to a four bedroom, okay? And that's, uh, what the assessors have it as.
Did they visit the site?
No, they did not visit the site.
Okay.
But I invited them.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, they were notified twice and they didn't respond. So the invitation, I don't understand where that came from.
Mike?
What relevance does that have to put up the new?
Probably not, I'm just giving an opportunity.
Well, my, well, my concern is, is that, you know, I, you're going from a three to a four, you're on the water. The water table's really high.
But the testing was obviously done. Witnessed by the town.
Did they do a park on there?
I'm sure they had to.
It's required and it was done and was approved.
And so the date of the park is on that septic design.
Everything is on the septic design, yes, sir.
Okay.
So.
Well, I'm learning, so.
Yep, I understand.
Okay, and then the other question that I had was if the building permit does get approved, he's tending on using the site at 128 to, in his writings, park ten vehicles possibly in all the, the lumber for the building that was home? And right now, have you seen that site?
I drove by it.
Okay, and there's veronal pools there, there's a lot of stuff dumped there, um, gravel, sand, um.
Building construction materials.
Not really.
Yeah, no.
No. Why would you call it, no?
Well, because you, they need, they need sand, they need gravel, they need.
That's what she means, she don't mean lumber or anything.
No.
Yeah, but where are they gonna put it? You saw the site. I mean.
Where are they gonna put, what's your question?
The lumber and ten, ten construction vehicles and.
That would have all been stipulated between conservation and, um, water health as far as whether they're gonna stockpile their material? Typically.
Is that what?
I don't know, cause they're coming to you for the permit, so.
Any concern about veronal, I don't know where she got that from, or any wetland or anything like that. Uh, it's a board, it's a conservation issue only, actually. Uh, Board of Health told you it was a septic and the septic is already done, as I said before, so.
So in order to build this property, if they're coming to you because they wanna extend it.
Right.
Okay, so now, after you say okay, do they have to go back to conservation? Or once you say that it's okay, that's it?
Conservation approved the plan and it was recorded in book five, six, one, six, three, page two, sixty-three.
I'm asking him if, if he got some of them still there.
Yeah, no, I must be him for an answer.
Oh.
Okay, so.
Okay, Conservation approved it two years ago, uh, and it was recorded in the registry of deeds in book five, six, one, six, three, page two, sixty-three.
Mm-hmm.
That's an order of conditions and you can go and look at that. And you have a DEB file number one forty-three, zero, nine, one, four. That's approved by Mass DEB and also approved by Mass Special and Wildlife.
Okay, so this was approved two years ago by Congress?
Yes, by everybody, by Conservation, Board of Health and everyone.
Still, still in effect?
And it's.
How long does the permit exist? Like, you get a permit and you have it forever or?
Conservation is usually three years and you can apply for one year extensions, one at a ti- one year at a time.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's already under construction, so it's, uh.
Which is honestly, it doesn't, with the zoning board, not Conservation Board of Health.
Yeah, I know, I just, I, I wanna understand how it proceeds and how it works to make sure that I understand what's happening.
Okay, yep, go ahead.
Now, if the 128 are real, they were giving a variance to put a shed in. And I didn't have a problem with that at all, I think that's fine. But now they're digging holes and there's all these water pools over there and the shed has not been put in. And the time has elapsed for that.
Cause that's this, these people?
Yes.
Oh.
But, but the case in front of us is for 115 Shore Road.
Yeah, but he put it in writing to put 128 in this information with 115. So I wanna make sure that it's.
No, I did not.
It's right there.
Please, you need to discuss.
Discuss.
Yeah, Bob.
Whatever you have to say, just, go ahead.
Excuse me.
I'll give you a chance to respond, go ahead.
No, I did, I did not write that letter.
Okay, fine, you didn't write, go ahead, ma'am.
So anyway, so, um, when he was talking to you about what he was doing at 115, he included 128 in, in this information. He said that he wanted to use it for the lumber and for parking and whatnot. And the shed has not been put in. And I don't want the shed to be put in now because they just, they're, they just have no consideration for the neighbors, the neighboring people, the area, the road.
The thing I just wanna say is the application in front of us is for one, 115.
Right.
You know, what he does on his other land.
But he's, but he wants to use that land for 115 to put his trucks and to put his materials. This is what he's saying in here.
And for the best of my knowledge, there is no zoning stopping somebody from putting.
That's right.
Building materials on a piece of land they own, if they're building next door.
But it can be a construction site for another site?
Go ahead, Mike.
Is that part of our application? Does it say it in our application that I use?
No.
The other, then it's, I don't know where this document's coming from, but.
It's his, it's from him.
Excuse me for a minute.
Okay.
Whatever that document is, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, what, what our application doesn't reflect these other properties.
So all we're gonna consider is 115 Shore Road.
It says, it says special permits the reason why he's for 115 and 128.
The application in front of us is for 115 to get.
So what do I do with this, the 128 issue? Come, come before you want a different date?
You can speak with the building commissioner, I don't know that they're, by storing building materials temporarily is, is, I don't believe that's a zoning violation.
But it's never been a temporary thing, the issue is ongoing. I mean, we don't have a septic built, they had to get an extension for that. They haven't even put the shed up, it's been over a year. I mean, you're only allowed so much time to do these things and it's a mess down there. So that's my concern, is the consideration. I don't care if they wanna put a shed there, but I do care if they're digging stuff up and throwing boulders on the side of the road and just leaving there, leaving you, your, 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 you know, trailer dump with a tag along and, and heavy equipment on the back of it in the middle of the road for weeks on end. That's a big concern. And then when you're doing construction on that road, you know, you got a bump and a hole and a ditch and then before you know it, it's not even possible. And at this point, I have to call the highway department and pretty much beg them to help us fix it. I mean, it's a major concern and that's a big house they wanna build.
It is.
So that's my concern more than anything is, is, you know, the destruction.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not sure if that is your concern, based on listening to everything that you've said. It seems as though you've got a problem with the style that these people have, with when they do something, they don't pick up or they leave things that they're not, and you're not concerned and trying to be good neighbors, is that what your major concern is?
Well, I had a conversation with Diane, you know, the night that the, um, we talked about putting in a shed. And she said, don't worry, we'll be a wonderful neighbor, but, but it's not factual. And it, and it's just disappointing.
I think I need to talk some more.
Well, it's not.
I'm not here to solve your problems, but it just feels like this is a neighborly dispute.
No, it's a road problem, it's a road issue.
And I understand that, believe me.
They don't own the road, you know, that's.
I do understand that.
Right, but neither do I. And when you're doing something like that, you know what kind of problems it's gonna create. And I need that to be taken into consideration.
I think we talked about that earlier, actually, that they wouldn't be parking their construction vehicles on the road.
But as they're going up and down the road, do you have an idea how heavy that equipment is? How backhoes dig up a road?
Yeah.
How, you know, damaging they can be?
Well, maybe what we could do is talk about, uh, road, uh, road conditions before and after. How's that?
Adoring would be nice, you know, we have to have plow trucks come down there in the winter, you know, when.
We have done, we've put conditions on before.
We could put a condition in anything that he.
And the other question that I have is the hours. I mean, you're out, they're out there till they feel like you don't know, sah, Sunday afternoon banging away, knocking trees down?
There are construction hours that are within the town. And, uh, I'm not, I don't, I can't recite them now, I know that our building commissioner probably could find those. Um, and to hold people. Yeah, it's in the bylaws.
Of course, I knew that's.
It's not in the zoning, it is in the bylaws. So I would like that to be, I would like that to be really considered because that, to me, is very, very important.
Sure.
When you have babies sleeping and, you know.
In the event it gets approved, it can be conditioned what the work hours are. They must abide by the Douglas.
Right.
The road, the road.
And the road is, the road is put back to the condition that it was in and it will be kept passable.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, and.
Anything we can do to help, I mean.
I mean, I'd appreciate it, I don't really, you know, I don't really wanna, you know, have a problem. I just don't wanna live with the problem because, like I said, it, they don't do the task, it just, uh.
Well, I hope we've alleviated some of your concerns because we certainly can take care of a lot of those things. They've had a standard permitting, frankly. If somebody comes in with a bunch of specific concerns, we can handle it.
And what happens if that's not abided by or?
Building commissioner, see that fellow right there, he's your best friend.
Larry, I, I thought he was phantom till tonight. I've spoken to him several times, but I thought he was like a phantom person. I'll see you tomorrow, I'll see you the next day, I'll see you the next day.
No, he's, he's only part time, so.
No, I, I fully understand that, really.
Is there anything else?
Um, I think that's it for now, but major road, major.
Sure.
Water pooling, things like that.
And that time, I understand.
No, I mean, I think, I think she made a point, is, um, and hopefully, Bob and his wife will consider that.
And I'm agreeable to it, you know?
Well, when I drove down there, I think, not just immediately in front of your property, there are roads in there, rough shape from.
The road.
Well, the town will come and do it and, you know, and then.
Well, you know that's a private property.
Yeah, they do come and help us out randomly. But that's why I'm concerned, private roads needs to be passable for all of us that live there, not just.
Private roads had issues for a while.
It's a private road.
Not just.
I can remember all the way back to nineteen seventy, that, that roads always had issues.
Are you old?
Huh? What's that?
I said, you're old.
Oh, yeah.
Nineteen seventy, I was just a kid.
Not as old as you.
Hey, I was seventeen then, I remember when I had road issues then.
I was ten years old, so.
Yeah, but you got older than me and I got younger.
Do you have any other concerns?
Um, no, but I think the other ladies might have something they wanna bring up.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you for your time, ladies.
Does anybody else would like to speak on this application? Hey, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Madeline Myers, I live, I'm next door to Bob and Diane Miller.
Okay.
Okay, um, we wrote a letter back in, uh, January of twenty sixteen addressing some of these concerns about the water, okay?
Excuse me, the letter was in whom, addressed to who?
Uh, Town of Douglas Board of Health.
Okay.
Okay, and.
With this zoning board, just so you know.
Yeah, I know, but you're all in the same building.
No, we're not, no, we all have specific duties.
We all live in Douglas, yes.
Yep.
Okay, so let's, we'll just leave that, okay? So the runoff would lead to substantial ponding, that kind of stuff. It's not, oh, I don't wanna go up there.
Okay.
I'm wanting to sit here. Um, the thing is, it may not, the water doesn't come from Mr. Miller's, but the fact that he has a berm, the water cannot go in his yard. My yard is much lower, it's the original house on the original lot. It was never, my father never brought in extra dirt or anything. When the house was built, it was equal to the railroad back in nineteen fifty-five.
Railroad?
The railroad track that went across that street, that you could, that we could. Oh, yeah, it, it went all the way to the state beach, okay? And you could actually pick up the wood from the railroad track back then, we had no electricity.
Should've made yourself a berm.
Uh, well, we didn't have to because it was equal. But over the years, the town has, you know, built up the road, built up the road, built up the road, to the point where everyone has filled to the left of me, okay, going north. So their yard is not impacted by the water flow from the road or from anything. What I want to say is I pay taxes in Douglas. We've been paying taxes for many years. The road problem has never been addressed. Some people in town believe Louis Tosino owns the road. Some people think it's Bob Miller that owns the road. Who owns the road? Nobody knows. So if we are a part of Douglas, to me, the town should come in and say, okay, let's fix this road so we won't have these drainage issues because they don't have them in Rhode Island, which is the same road.
Have you spoke to the highway superintendent?
I don't speak to anyone because I, this was caused, this came out of left field, honestly. I never thought.
What came out of left field?
This whole conservation issue with the house and the water and all this. You know, it wasn't this bad ten years ago.
I think you, you may wanna speak to highway superintendent, see what he can do to help you because they certainly are not responsible for the road immediately in front of your home. If that's where the water's coming from, that's not their responsibility.
But I've got issues beyond the road because there's so much water that comes in my yard that now I've got gullies in my yard.
Mm-hmm.
It's spongy in the yard, you know, I know we've had a lot of rain, but if this is the future, this is the way it's going to be, we don't know, we have no idea. But we, I don't need more runoff because everyone has a berm, so it comes down the road and comes in my yard. And I don't have the money to put in a berm. You know, some people think we're all well-to-do on that street. This is not always the case.
Well, the application for us is about specifically 115 Shore Road. I would suggest that you speak to highway superintendent, see if there's something he can do to help you, but I'm not sure what the water coming off the road immediately in front of your house has to do with this application.
And then, of course, the problem is it really is, it's a private road, the town, the town is.
I know, but I mean, really.
I know, I understand.
It's like the town says it's a private road, the people that live there say, oh, we can do what we want cause it's a private road.
Right.
And this is what's been going on. We rebuilt my house in twenty-ten, we couldn't even go over anything. Everything had to be redone inside, new studs, new electrical, new everything because we had to build on our whatever, that little.
Footprint.
That little footprint thing. Now, the minute you start adding other things, berms, big rooms, big everything, it changes the character, it changes the historical impact of the neighborhood, which was low impact on the lake.
Mm-hmm.
When you live full-time and you use washing machines and dishwashers, it's very different. When you live full-time and you use washing machines and dishwashers, it's very different. So this, it's not, I think the Millers can build a castle if they want, but it's fine with me. It's just the water is getting worse and someone's got to address it.
So that's the purpose of the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission.
Well, they've kind of approved all this stuff.
Well, then that means that whatever they're doing at the site is going to be taken care of by, and ameliorated so that the water won't be impacted. That they're far enough away that the, that the systems that they're putting in around the house are not going to impact the water. It just, it can't. I mean, I don't want the water impacted.
I would suggest you see the highway superintendent, see if he can help you.
This has been going on for how many years? 60 years now?
Well...
Come on.
It's all I can suggest.
I'm going to go talk to the highway department now on fixing up the road. Really, really?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I do too, but I know where it's going to go.
Either that or, you know, you could talk to the town administrator some afternoon.
You can talk all you want. Talk is cheap, but actually getting some done...
We have a new town administrator. We have a new town administrator.
Well, I'm going to stay, we're going to stay focused on this application. Mike, did you have something?
Now, Jean also sent a letter, and her letter was signed.
Did you have something?
We have, I think, one other.
How is the, the House going to change it if she has a problem now?
I don't see that it's going to.
If you already have the problem now, I don't understand how the, how a new structure's going to change it.
It may not. It may not, but I don't, what I'm saying is, it may, and it doesn't matter. There's still going to be runoff.
But as long as the runoff's not coming from their property into yours...
You don't know that from the ground, inside the ground. You don't know that when you move boulders and you move and you take out tree roots from other sides and other properties. I mean, come on. The water has nowhere to go but to go into the lake.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ma'am?
I guess I'll come up here.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Dr. Jean Lawrence. I was concerned that you said this would be dismissed because I sent it with an email that signed my name. And the reason that I didn't sign it formally, I said it was a draft because this actually reflects the information and concerns of several people. We actually had sort of...
Let's just say, unless the people come...
Well, we'll sign it, we'll send it to you. Well, some of them are here right now because Kate was really bringing up concerns that have to do with, like, the construction in general. But these concerns that are written here are very much the concerns of all three of us and, and most of the neighbors with whom we have spoken. So I'd like, I guess you didn't read it, and I apologize that I sent it very, very late.
But the board, I mean, I got it, we all got it.
Way too late.
Five minutes or seven.
Yeah.
And this was written by?
It was written by me mostly, yeah. And really entirely...
And your name's Dr. Smith?
Jean Lawrence.
Oh, Jean. G, J, Jean?
A-N-N-E-B Lawrence, Lawrence, yes.
And, and Dr. Lawrence, what credentials do you have to be able to use to write, write this document, other than being a neighbor? Anything or...
Oh, you mean, am I like an environmental engineer?
An engineer or something?
No, and that's actually why, and I just want to explain, first of all, I want to say that we've talked about some of the issues. We have not talked about the central issue. And so this is the third zoning hearing, and I would like to definitely focus on the central issue, which is that this is a huge expansion of a house in a wetland. Madeline, they're remodeling...
Let me just stop you. They have conservation approval, we're the zoning board.
Yeah, can I, so can I ask a question about that? Because I read on the Conservation Commission website that, that that approval was supposed to be sought simultaneously or after this approval. So I don't understand how the Conservation Commission approved this without all the plans and without your approval.
I'm sure they did have the plan.
They must have had the plans.
And, well, you didn't have the plans in the first zoning meeting, so...
They had a plan that was, that was off by a couple feet.
Did you attend the conservation meeting?
No, I didn't receive a certified letter.
You didn't own, you weren't living...
You know what, you need to speak to me. And we just want to keep this orderly.
She wasn't living in that, on that lake at the time. The other owners received it. Oh, that was two years ago, right?
Yeah, the lady said 2016.
Two years ago? No, I bought my property on June 6th of 2004.
When we went to...
2004.
Well, you know, that is a conservation issue and...
And the certified mailings that were sent to them.
They're required to notify all the, the abatis that, is it 500 feet area?
100.
100 feet.
Well, I, I was not notified. I will say, you know, you asked what my qualifications are, I mean, I just...
There was some mention here that we're actually engineering, engineering assumptions. And I, with those assumptions, I would expect to find a stamp on here.
Yeah, so did you, I don't know if you saw this top part. I said this is a draft because just before I was, you know, this is a lot to put on citizens. Like, I came to the first meeting and I just said, "I'm curious," you know? And I had no idea that the variance would be so big. And I, I am really feel badly that I come forward and say, "Yikes, what are you, what?" But, but this is a very large variance that is against everything I understood about that area when I bought my property because I checked into it, that the zoning is upheld. And, and so I took the time and expense to ask an environmental engineer, a natural resource services person. His name's Scott Rabideau. He's highly qualified, he's highly respected. I don't know if you all know him, but most town managers do in the tri-state area. And I, realizing, you know, maybe it's getting in over my head, I asked him and literally I said to him, "I'm asking you to go there and see if these concerns are justified," you know? Because I don't want to get into a big thing if the concerns are not justified. And so, so he was on quite a tight schedule. He went there yesterday and just before I sent this, I, you know, he, he weighed in on it. I got his information and then I was trying to quickly, quick, click, quickly put it together and send to you. So basically, I don't have credentials as a natural resource scientist, but he's a wetlands biologist, and he thought this was reasonable. These are reasonable concerns held by many people, and it's very difficult to come here and say so because I don't want the Millers to be mad at me for the rest of my life.
But if you had environmental concerns, you should have been notified by Conservation Commission.
And I was not notified, yeah. And my husband was, was an environmental scientist.
And I'm going to assume you were because it's pretty thorough.
He passed away, but it was very, very important to me when I bought my property. As a matter of fact, Mr. Miller might remember, I didn't, I backed out of buying my property because I was concerned about the water table and water. And I spoke to you about it. You were kind enough to speak to me for quite some time. And, and so I backed out and then I ended up, six months later, deciding to buy it. It was, it was a substantial concern. And I'm also concerned for Madeline. I know that she, she was talking about the road a lot and you think the problem's just the road, but if I understand correctly, the pipes sticking out of the septic system, they have to be covered with land, right?
No.
No? They will never be?
That's a septic design approved, and that's a requirement, and it has to be like that.
Those are cleanouts, so they have opportunity. So they presumably will be flushed with the grass when it, when the grass is planted.
And then the house...
Except the vents.
Except the vent, yeah.
The house, yeah.
But the cleanouts...
The cleanouts will be flushed with the ground, just for inspection only.
The house will be very raised up, I guess, so there's going to be a lot of digging and moving and things in the back. Now, when I was going to maybe plant a tree or replace stones on my wall, I contacted the Conservation. He came down and he said, "Well, you know, you probably don't have to, you know, go through formal thing, but it's probably better if you do." I mean, they say if you're going to pick up a shovel, okay?
But they've already been there. That's what I'm trying to tell you. They've already been to Conservation, proposed what they're proposing to us, and got Conservation's approval. So unfortunately, we're here for zoning, not for conservation.
Well, so, well, conservation is one concern, okay?
What number shore road do you own?
I'm 119 shore road.
Okay, thank you.
And I think that the thing that's most concerning and most pressing is Madeline has described to me over the last year, year and a half, my yard's getting so spongy. Now, I know you're all saying that the septic system isn't hurting anything, won't hurt anything, it's fine, but I actually think, we all think, that you're taking a risk on us. And right now, we have regulations in place that don't subject us to the risk. Like, right now, there are regulations that protect us, but the decision you will make is to remove those regulations.
It just alters something. Alter something.
Yeah, it alters them in a way that poses risks to us. That's, that's my point.
Yes, the septic was designed by professional company engineering staff, and it was reviewed by the state, professionals at the state, and the professionals at the town itself, and they all reviewed and accepted the plans.
Knowing, knowing that it was proximate to Walin Lake.
Yes, knowing all this.
Yeah, and so I think that Marie LaJoie had mentioned that sometimes a matter has to go back to the Conservation Commission. Like, I was not notified, so there's a problem. And, and I'm not sure, like, I came to the first meeting and all the plans weren't all detailed, so how did they act on this if they didn't have the full scope of things? And, and I'm trying to understand, like, isn't the footprint of this house almost doubling? It's like 70, 80 percent?
No.
You said it was going to be 50 by 70.
Okay.
Isn't it 50 by 70? That's what you said at the last meeting.
It's significantly bigger than the other.
It's much bigger than the other. And just so you know, all of the neighbors, like, when I moved there, Madeline's house, she redid it really, really nicely, but it's, it's tiny because it had to stay in the footprint. Everybody had to stay in the footprint.
She could have made a larger footprint if she had applied to this board, just so you know.
Well, go ahead. You go ahead.
We had an architect, we had engineers, we had everything. Everything was submitted here, everything was above board, and we could not take any more room because it's too close to both lines, to, you know, to the both, to the barrier of Mr. Miller's land and Mrs. Lawrence's land.
Ma'am, what number hole is your...
117.
117.
And so, like, I was confused because you keep talking about 15 feet.
Right.
And you said, "Oh, it's going to be five feet more from Madeline's," which is true, but it's going to move much further, much further, closer to the other house and encroach on its boundaries. It's also, there's an issue of the survey, right? You told the other neighbors that the survey, you cut into their property, like, you own part of what they thought was their property.
I should talk to them.
I, I don't want to speak for Kate.
Excuse me? To speak to the chairman, please.
I'm sorry, yeah. But I ask you to look a little deeper at this. There is, there is an issue about the, the border is now being told that it is your front that wanted to spend for 40, 50, or 70 years, for as long. And, and so if you're going to go 15 feet, you're already encroaching on the space and then you're even closer to the border. So I just...
I would assume they had it surveyed by professional survey. If, if you dispute that, you're certainly welcome to hire one.
It's not my, it's not my property, and, but I just want you to understand that neighbors can be concerned, but it's very hard to come forward and say so.
We've been listening to you very patiently.
No, I, I, I don't mean, me, I'm, I'm, you know, kind of sticking my neck out here, but, but I, I just, I just would like you to realize that it has impact for other people. And there are some additional issues that haven't been fully addressed.
And it can't be unless you bring them up.
Yeah.
Or someone brings them up.
Right. So, so one of the reasons that it's an issue is because the house is so big. And I just wondered why couldn't you make a nice, a nice house on the, on the existing footprint or something closer to it?
Why don't you speak to me?
Okay.
They have the rights to apply for any, like, anybody else in town.
Right.
We have people that applied not so long ago to be four feet from the lot line.
Yeah.
They didn't get it, but they applied for it. So they have the right to ask for, and that's what this board is, the Board of Appeals. If you comply with all zoning, the building commissioner will give you a building permit. If you're unable to because of size, or shape, or soil conditions of your property, then you have a right to appeal to zoning regulations. That's what they're doing.
Right, right, I understand that.
And I, and it is a big house for the lot. There's no disputing that. But I don't think it's any closer to the sidelines than most of the houses on the street.
So, so to be honest with you, I don't really fully understand that logically. Okay, so my house is 20 feet from the line, so that means I could expand my house five or six feet, but I don't think that's good because everybody closes in and it closes in the environment. So the fact that they're already crowded isn't a reason to make them more crowded.
No, and we take that into account.
Okay.
We take that into account.
And we hope that everybody feels that way, and everybody's different.
And we do have people who ask for, we had one, I said not so long ago, four feet, and the board decided that four feet was way too tight.
I think that the thing that most, you know, I got more concerned about it as I learned more is because I know you're saying that the, the wall doesn't, protects Madeline, but she's indicated that her yard is spongier and that her, so her house is built low, it's been renovated, but it's built low, and she has this, like, wooing on her floor. And, and so it seems like there's a risk here in, in having the things become worse because the septic system isn't even used yet. The, the house has been a two-bedroom...
It said that we've already decided, and it said that that's runoff from the wa, from the road. Runoff in the whole place, and then you abut, you abut her.
Yeah.
So you're probably being impacted by that same road runoff.
But what Kate just said is groundwater. Okay, so when you put in a, a four-bedroom house in a spot that's been a two-bedroom summer house, and you start using a lot of water, it fills up the water table. The water tables, the water's got to go somewhere, and you've now dug a bigger foundation.
The septic issue is, is a border health issue, and, and I can say to you, I'm certain that they went through all the channels, border health, state, because they're on the lake.
Right.
And quite honestly, this, I assume the newest septic system on the street, and I would say it's, it's the best on the street.
And it's above the groundwater, you know?
All right, what about mine? I have a very lovely septic system.
But is it, so in the, in the plans for the septic, it said that it wasn't subject to the Wetlands Act. Is that right? It's not, it's not, I'm sorry.
Sorry, can I say something?
There is a site design for the, there is, if the septic is outside the 100-foot buffer, it is outside the jurisdiction of conservation, but the building is inside, so we have to go to Conservation for that.
Okay.
However, the septic itself is above groundwater, is about, minimum is three feet above groundwater, the bottom of the system. So I think you just need, and the groundwater is something different than what you see above the ground. So I think you need to read on DEB regulations and stormwater management, maybe you can get more education on that.
Well, I think that I've hired somebody who's, who's an expert, and this person is not a conservationist who blocks builder. He's actually someone who helps people fill homes or wetlands. And I specifically said, "I don't want to get into this if these concerns aren't valid." And he went and he looked and said, "These concerns are valid." Now, I can get more of a statement from him or more formal things if you want, but, but...
But those issues would be either border health or conservation, one or the other, or maybe both.
Okay.
You know, so unfortunately...
But isn't, doesn't it impact, oh, I see, so that doesn't have anything to do with what you're going to do here?
Dimensional, yeah.
Okay.
Is it okay to build your house fifteen feet from the lot line? Is it okay to, to have less than the required frontage? Those are the things that we deal with. And the others that you're primarily referring to are either border health, conservation, or both. And they do have those approvals and...
I don't think there's anything to preclude you from sending this letter, and with a letter signed, signed by you, telling them that you, you're concerned about the, the permit, um, and send it to the board of health also, and see if you can, you know, work that issue and get a response from them. That, that's really outside of our permit.
Well, can I see why it's a little bit related? Because the size of the house and the dimensions of the house are to support more people and for, and for, you know, a larger house, and, um, and so you've got more septic waste and so forth from that, and, and so it seems somewhat related to me. And also, you're, you're going to take up more, um, surface area that, that's not, no longer, you know, it becomes impervious.
Impervious, that's right.
And so I'm just trying to understand, even just like, for this case, like, why is it that I thought, I was told for decades, there were strict rules and regulations, that this is a wetland, it's very careful, you gotta call them and figure to do anything, and then this just seemed like, yeah, you're gonna put up a really large, huge house, and these issues weren't raised, and I feel kind of bad that I raised them.
They were raised. They went to Conservation Commission, which is in charge of, of wetlands and, and obviously protecting, protecting the environment. They, and they went to border health, they have a septic system that was designed according to the latest and greatest regulations.
We went to DEB also, the state, and we also went to Fisheries and Wildlife.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, there is a document, the state document for Title V, it's called 310 CMR-15, it's online for the state, you can go through it and it will answer all your questions about the, the septic itself.
Okay. Bill?
Okay, I just wanted to mention one more thing. I mean, this is a pre-existing, non-conforming property.
Right.
I don't have an issue with them wanting to fix their home or correct it, but I don't want a precedent set down there that, you know, come before the ZBA and get a triple house and, you know, hang it in the middle of the street, and, you know, I'm very concerned about that, that precedent in the non-conforming.
Well, the board weighs every, every case on its merits, so we don't know what's coming down the road.
I mean, I have lots down there, I'll come see you. You know what I mean? Okay, you, you know, okay, my turn.
What lot do you own, please?
I own one twenty-seven and one twenty-five.
And I, I guess, I just thought it's better to raise these concerns now, because if they arise later...
I think you should talk to him.
Well, it's partly because I want you to understand, I, I'm not just trying to give you a hard time, I'm genuinely concerned. And, and I, I, I don't know if you can all guarantee it's all gonna be fine, the water table's not gonna raise.
Those, those are issues that are...
They are conservation, so can they go back there? Because wasn't there a regulation that it was supposed to be considered either simultaneously or after the zoning board?
That, that is common practice, that people wait and they try to get it all at once, but actually, I have to say, they, they approached it, I think, the right way. They, they got some other, other approvals. We've had people, we had one, we gave somebody a variance to build on, on the lake, and they went to Conservation after and they, they, Conservation said they built too close to the lake. They didn't build, they proposed to build too close to the lake. So we gave them a variance, they had to refile, come back because, so they actually did it, I think.
Right, yeah.
You know, did it kind of the right way, got the other approvals out of the way, you know?
Just one thing, Dan, these last two ladies that were speaking, I just want you to know, you, you understand that the Millers own two lots.
I own two lots, too.
Uh, they own, um, one fifteen, one thirteen and one fifteen. So this is the, the property, what they're building on this, the, the property.
But the property has already been...
You have not recognized it.
Excuse me.
What they're building on the property, maybe a large house, but it's also being built on two lots, so just, just so that you know.
Just so you understand that, um, addition of the garage expanded the house from like twenty-two, twenty-four feet to thirty-eight feet. Their, their house has already got, like, a footprint that's seventy percent bigger than mine or something. And so a large house could be, a pretty good-sized house could be built on that footprint, right? And, and so I, I just, and so there's supposed to be a rule about, um, hardship, but I don't know if it's a hardship to not have, you know, you could make a really nice house there. So, um, it, you know, that, that's, that, so when you say that they have two lots, it's thirteen percent of two acres, right? So it's, it's very non-conforming, even if it's twice as big as mine.
Oh, yeah, no.
And the footprint would already be almost twice as big as mine. And she's got an extra lot, she's not preparing to fill it in with extra house, and I'm not gonna come and ask you, can I have fifteen feet from the side when I already, I have twenty? Because that extra five feet is nice to walk past so you can see the lake.
Yep. Pam?
Also, one more thing, there's also a culvert that goes from across the street underneath their driveway to the lake, which helps drain all the water from that end. And, um, I think it's been damaged from when the septic was put in, so I would like that to...
Um, the culvert is shown on the plan, actually. It's actually not under the driveway or to the other side of the property.
Oh, yeah.
Spoiled.
Yeah.
But it's underneath their other driveway that they're gonna pack vehicles on.
It's twenty feet down.
No, it, it's not, it's not under the proposed driveway.
It's under the driveway now that they're gonna use, that they use.
Yeah.
And he dug under it to put the septic in.
Is that pipe under your future driveway?
It's an existing, it's an ex, no.
Where is the pipe? It goes from across the street under the driveway.
That's an existing pipe, that's an existing pipe that was located in...
If you wanna take a look at it, showing it right here.
I've seen it, I've seen it.
Okay.
I see it, you can see it in the street when you go down there.
Yeah, it's right here. It's on this side of the street, right down to the lake.
Yeah, and this is a driveway. Their driveway, one of their driveways. And it's under there, but when he put in the septic system...
The driveway's right there.
But when he put in the septic, he had to dig underneath that driveway.
Septic is over here.
I know, but he had, it's, it's coming across the street, that's what I'm trying to explain to you.
I understand.
So he dug under there, and this culvert's not working properly.
How do you know that?
Because they, 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 where they sit backing up on the other side of the street.
Is it backing up, is that what you said?
Yeah.
They never backed up before?
If, uh, if the culvert is not, is backing up, that's mean maybe salt went from the other side of the street, not from this side, because that's a solid pipe underground going from the other side of the road to the lake.
That's a solid pipe going right to the lake.
So, it has nothing...
Okay, so the only thing that I can think of is, um, that's the side of, of the house, where your construction, your large construction vehicles are going, your very heavy ones.
Right.
Yes.
So that is potentially a problem.
Well, I own the pipe.
And, you know, I just, I'm not sure...
There is no easement, the town does not own that pipe.
The pipe is working.
And it is working.
Well, well, they're, um, can I, so...
We could be done. We're almost done with this?
Yes, we are.
So when the, um, when the septic was dug...
You know what, we really can't, we've already, they have it approved, they had it installed, they had it inspected, and, you know, the, the...
Yeah, I'm not talking about the septic, I'm talking about the water. Um, I, I'm trying to find pictures here.
Of what water?
Um, large boulders were taken and put on the other side of the road, and now there's water backed up there. But you, but yes, that, that's true, and the conservation...
You've gotta understand, we're focused on one fifteen short drive.
Not trying to be difficult, but...
Right.
You know, we can't, I mean...
This is out of our, way out of our realm.
It really is.
And to be honest, um, we've heard about all we can hear.
Yeah, I mean...
I think you need, we've given you some direction as to where you, I think you need to go for secondary opinion or secondary try at this. I, I'm sorry that, uh, there's, there's obviously issues with neighbors down there. It's terrible, it's too bad.
But, but, do I understand that what you're saying is, like, this is the last step, the other two have been approved, and so this is the last step?
Yep.
So, so there isn't anything we can do, is there?
Yeah, talk to Larry.
If you have, if you have concerns, welcome to, um...
Phantom Larry.
I do, would like to ask something, the board. It seems like, um, finished grade is a concern for the neighbors, this property is being built up.
Yes, thank you, yes.
So...
No, please go on, try.
So, we don't have a, what the grade was before the septic was in, and we don't really have a finished, I mean, a grade when it was, when it was doing now, one can, if I ask...
And that was, again, approved by Conservation and the Board of Health.
Okay, but I, I'm kind of concerned about trying to address that grading issue, um, because it is, does seem to be a built-up issue.
There's an impact, possible impact, yeah.
Right. And if, if the rest of the property is gonna be built up too, with the addition of the house, um, again, water flows, changes.
There is actually no proposed grading in the back. The only grading was proposed only for the septic system, to meet the setback, I mean, to meet the breakout for the septic, but nothing...
Is it gonna be a walkout basement?
Yes. So we, we...
So you're gonna have a foundation exposed all the way down the sides?
No, they stepped down the foundation, but, as you see, the existing grade, nothing changed there.
Yeah, no, I see those. That's, I was looking at the top of concrete, it's one or two, they have ninety-five in the back, so there's a difference of seven and a half feet. That's why I asked you to...
Exactly, yes.
This elevation, I'm, I'm...
Is there?
Hold on.
Maybe?
It's full strength, yeah.
I have, I got some of my elevation.
Good.
So if it's... Yeah. 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 This is it, Dan.
Yep. Does show it stepping down on the side, right? Does show it stepping down, yeah, from the side, with a full walkout in the basement.
May I raise my hand one more time?
Sure.
Okay, so, this one, the town, the list, the Conservation Commission, they did have a question about that culvert. Is anything gonna happen to the existing twelve-inch pipe discharged into Alum Lake? And that's the one I'm talking about that's damaged.
How do you know it's damaged?
Because I tell you, it's backing up, and it, it used to come under the...
It's not draining, I guess.
Right.
He's estimating...
Doesn't mean it's damaged, it could be clogged with leaves.
His hearing, his hearing's...
I mean, there's, there's a variety of things.
Could be clogged with leaves.
Yeah, it could be something, but, but I wanna make sure...
So that's not damaged, so you're saying things that really aren't aligned. You can't accuse somebody of damaging the pipe.
Well, it's not working properly, it's not working properly.
But you said the pipe is damaged, and that's where, where having a problem. You can't just make assumptions, unprofessional assumptions.
Okay, I'm sorry for that, but I'm just saying that it's something's not, it's not draining into the lake properly.
Well, it's on the town road, have you talked to the highway superintendent?
Nope, it's not the town road.
Private, it's on a private road.
It's a private road.
Right, can you talk to the highway superintendent?
And it goes underneath this gentleman's property.
No, because that came from Conservation.
Maybe it belongs to him now, I don't know.
Yeah.
The pipe inlet is on the other side, so, I mean, he, he can't even control that. Somebody's, the owner of the road, whoever he is, he has to clean that.
Now we have an owner of the road, he's the owner of the road.
Is that Lily? Hook it, is that Lily, go to my call.
Who it plays you, unless there's a problem.
Yeah, let him do it.
So you're, you're gonna build up the front yard.
Yeah, just for the septic, we have to meet the breakout for the septic, so...
Yeah.
But you, you most likely have to build up this area overhead.
Uh, no, actually, we're meeting the, the breakout.
Because, yeah, because your elevation change from here to the first floor of the house is about five and a half feet, so a handicap ramp would have to be about, uh...
The handicap ramp starts from here at about ninety-nine elevation.
It'd be about fifty feet long, sixty feet long?
Sixty feet.
Your handicap ramp would be about sixty feet long if you, if you went out that grade up to it. One inch per foot, five and a half foot difference.
So maybe because of the change for the handicap ramp, maybe he might just build this area here, just to meet the handicap ramp.
No, everybody's talking about grading and, and runoff, that's why I'm asking that question. Just making sure I'm clear, that's all.
We haven't closed the public hearing, that's the next step. Okay. Anybody else wants to speak on this?
The voucher for the engineer for North Village.
Do we also have anything else to discuss?
Well, I sent that poor lady away.
Okay. All right, if there's no further information, we can entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Someone?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, second by Mrs. Holmes, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing's now closed.
We can say anything.
Would the board like to, uh, go to a decision meeting tonight? We have, um...
What do you think, we have twelve, and more?
Ninety days. Ninety days for the close of the public hearing.
So we just lost.
Yeah. So, you wanna make a decision tonight, or we have ninety days anyway?
Well, I appreciate Larry's input, um, I just wonder whether or not we, we need to codify, obviously, his, his suggestion, I think, with regard to grading. Any other thoughts? I mean, that, that's a culprit.
The pipe?
Yeah.
And probably stormwater management off the roof, or whatever, we talked about that in the past.
I think the pipe problem's gonna start with whoever owns the road. I mean, it's been said that it's damaged, but there's no proof of that.
Right.
You know?
It's been said that it's plugged, so, so we've got an issue on a private road with a non-private...
Something, yeah.
It just, maybe we need to have somebody do some research on that, on how, how we can go about fixing that before we make our decision. I mean, the public hearing's closed, we can't get any, any more information on our decision.
Right.
But we certainly can get information on ameliorating issues that have been brought up by the people who attended tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Do you think we need some guidance on that, or assistance, or what?
I mean, I, I, I'm not sure that it, if there's something wrong with the structure on the other side of the road.
Yeah, no, no, no.
What, what can the applicant do about that?
That's true.
You know?
That's true.
I mean, if it's damaged on the other side of the road, or it's clogged with leaves, or...
Or if it's damaged on his property.
Yeah.
Is he liable, should he be able to, I mean, should he be required to fix it?
Well, I think he should keep it maintain, functioning.
Okay.
I, I think that's fair, the requirement, you can't block it off until the street gets flooded.
Well, I guess my concern, Dan, was that, that's the side of the house, that, that the construction vehicles are gonna, those heavy construction vehicles are gonna use.
Yeah.
And it's, it's cement, I mean, those things, you know, you don't want people driving over your septic systems either, two big trucks, I, I don't know. So there's some possibility there.
Well, he said we just can't park on them. No, the meeting's closed, you won't be able to add anything.
I mean, my mind is kind of blown.
We can ask the highway department to take a look at it, but I don't know that he'd even fix it.
No, I know, I know.
It's on, it's on private property.
Yeah.
Well, I think the problem is no reason to that, like...
Right? Yep.
So who would have placed the...
No.
Like, uh, Louis, I guess.
I, I think originally, it was done by the state.
Probably.
And then it was repaired.
You know, we closed the public hearing.
I know, but you have...
No, we closed the public hearing.
No, you, you can't...
All right, so, whatever the board wishes, um...
And I'd like to get, let them go, you know, staff them in.
I don't see any information that we could gather that, that would have any bearing on, on what they're asking for.
On that, yeah.
As far as having an issue with the, with the pipe or the drainage or something like that, that's more of a highway conservation issue, and if there, and there's a concern with the abutting neighbors, they would put in a, uh...
We could make it a condition that, that drain pipe be maintained to, so it's full functioning.
Even without a, even without a easement?
I think we can condition whatever we'd like to condition, and if we're getting concerns from others that they believe the pipe's damaged, we could make that a condition, and it's just out of his control if the issue's on the, on the other side of the street. But we, we don't want him to damage the pipe and block, block the flow.
Right. Isn't existing...
Yes.
Or maybe you can make a motion.
No, you made, you already wrote down, you know what you're doing. I made the last one.
I did not.
Just for the record, Mrs. Holland, Mrs. Holmes, myself and Mr. Fitzpatrick will be voting on this. It's for the minute taker, she's not here. So, sorry.
Okay, I'm gonna move that we approve the special permit for the Millers, case number two zero one eight dash zero, dash one two, with some conditions. One is that they maintain the condition of the road so that it's passable.
Oh, yeah.
During, before, you know, keep it into, into a good, good working order after the, after they're completed. And the construction working comply with the town regulations, which I, I'm gonna say it's eight to nine.
I think it's like seven to seven, I think, is it?
Is it seven to, okay.
I haven't checked before I...
Whatever it is.
Comply with town regulations and that the twelve-inch RCP pipe be maintained patent.
Just a question on one of our conditions.
Yeah, go ahead.
The maintaining the condition of the road.
Yep, open.
What distance?
Oh, wow.
Well, from where?
From where?
From where to where?
The whole road.
Not that long.
How about, well, I mean, they're gonna be using the road from Virchell Road to their property.
All right, so it's just, my only concern is for, for the applicant is to have it like that. Their road's typically in pretty tough shape.
Yep.
And to make them be liable for that road from the bottom of Virchell to their property, I think would be somewhat unfit.
I would say...
So give me a hand, guys.
Immediately in front of their property and to their other lot where they're keeping materials and...
Okay.
Equipment.
That's good.
So from, what is the other lot number?
One twenty-eight.
So you'd, you'd...
Between 115 and 128.
Be responsible to maintain for, as far as park or whatever, between 128 and 115?
During construction.
During construction.
And because Larry's gonna use way too much gas going up there every time there's a complaint if it's too broad of an area.
Right. So I, I mean, I think that's fair, cause they're gonna be moving equipment up and down that street.
And logic has to play into it, obviously. I recently did a project out in Monterey in the town plan, highways survey, told me that if I mess up that road at all, I have to fix it. Because they were all their roads up there.
Sure. Why, did you pay it too?
No, there was no payment. I just filled in the whole stuff.
So we can make them a condition, during construction, you have to maintain it from your other lot to, to the lot you're building on.
Can be reasonable about it if you, if you cause a problem somewhere, you need to fix it.
I mean, you have the equipment there, so it would be easier for you to maintain it than...
And should we also, I, I didn't put in that the road not be blocked with construction vehicles, but I mean, I, I think that would be an additional condition to, you know, construction vehicles not be parked on the road.
Yeah, and that's an easy fix, too. Call the police department, if I have a department and they can get the apparatus, then they're immediately fined anyways.
Yeah, okay. Is that it? Okay, so we made the motion.
Okay, we, motion by Mrs. Holmes with conditions.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mrs. Holland. Any further discussion?[1612.32]